City Council meeting, the board, I would invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could we have roll call, please?
Can't call ya.
Here.
Hey, Coach Ron.
Here.
Matt White.
Here.
Travis Shaw, yeah.
Here.
Why you here?
Here. You will email a copy of our minutes from our August 6th meeting. If you've had a chance to review the minutes, I'd look for a motion to either amend or approve the minutes.
Make motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our August 6th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First thing, Phyllis, it's the Nationwide Fixed Account Contract Amendment for employees.
I believe I gave it to Ken to review. It's just saying that they can lower the fixed rate, interest rate, basically what it says. So, I'll be okay with this, Ken?
Yeah, standard. I mean, it's a little bit different than what I've seen before where you have a guaranteed minimum rate, but that guaranteed minimum rate can be adjusted on a contract basis. I mean, it's really, you kinda have to accept it, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I don't think it's negotiable.
So, just authorize you need to sign the contract.
I'll look for a motion for Phyllis to authorize signing this contract for the Nationwide Fixed Account Contract Amendment.
So.
Second. Have a motion, a couple of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. One item down. Grab your budgets, folks. Phyllis, at the last meeting, gave us all a copy of the proposed budget for 2020, year 2020. And you've all had these in your hands now for a couple of weeks. I've looked through mine a couple of times, and overall, I think the questions I had have already approached Phyllis about and got them cleared up. I had very few questions, in all honesty. It's probably a good idea to go through the whole contract department by department, just to see if there are any questions or comments from the department heads. So, we'll start. We will start out with the Department of Mayor. The mayor's budget was up $9,166. That's reflecting our annual pay increase plus the added public art director. Otherwise, I don't think there's any changes, really.
Phyllis, are the $10,000 seed money, the city council, where will that appear?
You mean for the Art Commission?
Right.
Well, I'll have to transfer it probably just from the general fund into the new fund, the Arts Commission Fund.
Okay, it'll be in the Arts Commission Fund. Now, that's not reflected in any of this document yet.
No.
Okay.
Any question on the Mayor's Department? If not, let's move on to the Clerk Treasurer's Department. And other than the wage increase and a $450 software contract, no changes. Any questions for Phyllis? Moving on to Law Department. No changes other than an annual pay increase. Next would be Police, General Police Budget. Lenny has laid out line by line any changes that he has.
I got a couple of questions for you, Lenny. Yeah, 413 shows up several different ones, but there's an employee benefit closing allowance on the first page and the second page. Seems to be the same thing. What's the difference there? I see the reasoning say new uniforms. If I'm looking at the top of page two, the new uniforms, equipment for full-time or reserves, how does that differ from?
When the 413, my employee allowance, like I just said, there is a section for secretary uniforms, and that employee benefits allowance is to add on more reserves and also in case if police leave our department, I have to supply them with everything, which is close to $30,000 or $4,000. I haven't heard anybody leaving, but, you know, I need to have some money where I have to get them fully uniformed if they do leave.
So, okay, so it's the annual allowance plus four new.
Cushion.
New or reserve?
Yeah.
Yeah. 4.22, couple items on the, just the increase in maintenance, tires, is that, you see that being an annual increase?
Well, I did that based on, we need to get our three new cars in this year. So, when they come, they're supposed to arrive within a couple of weeks, then we'll have three additional vehicles next year.
Okay.
Plus more gas, oil, and tires.
Which kinda goes with that. What's the difference in 4.22 and 4.36? Is that, well, maybe one vehicle specific and one building?
4.22 is what operating supplies, and 4.36 is what repairs.
Repair, okay, yep.
Bless you.
And then the only other thing, I guess, is the cell phones.
Yeah.
Right, so that's, I know we talked about that a little before, but everybody's kinda using their own cell phones now. How is that? I mean, it's not replacing radios.
No.
But what's the real, I mean, how do they use phones now? And what, and I guess with that, what is the cradle for the car?
The cradle point?
Yeah.
The cradle point is the axle that gets internet into our laptops underneath the car.
That's like your docking station?
Oh.
Yeah.
Your laptop.
So, that's not, that's not having to do with the phone?
No.
Yeah.
See, you have some in here, my folks.
As a cellphone, we depend on our emails with our cell phones. And I did show, Calum and Dyer, the new IT security system.
Yeah.
I can get information off my phone, but I have to plug into the county to accept me because it's a work phone. She's gonna also like, Wayne Brooks, who don't have a work phone, he can't have that opportunity to get that information. Also, another action is that my officers or younger guys that have part-time jobs, vacation, whatever, if they make an arrest and they can't find their charges, the prosecutor can email by PDF them charges, and he can ask to sign on his phone and send it back to prosecutors.
But it has to be a phone tied into the county system?
Right.
The county system access all those records is good, but creates a lot of additional expenses.
I saw, I mean, we're in, the cost of phones plus additional $8,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that is the government rate for the phones on that.
So, if they get these phones, they're gonna have a work phone and a personal phone?
The sergeants.
Or is their work phone gonna be their personal phone?
Some officers, like the sergeants, they do keep their personal phone, but I can't really say 50/50 on that. But it's primarily a use for phoning. I tell them, watch what they send, watch what they store in there, because that is a work government phone. You know, a lot of guys show me text messages on their personal phones, which is funny, but can be graphic, but I tell them, if we do get these government phones, they really have to be careful on how they use that phone strictly for work.
You can't stop what people send you, which is one of the reasons I went to two phones.
Well, a lot of times, I'm a Facebooker, so I get some Facebook messages. I don't open up at home, I don't open up on my work phone. So, I kinda, I have to stress that to the guys who do it.
Right. Yeah, I don't think you should have Facebook on your work phone.
Do you have, I mean, this is, I can try to set a conversation, but is there an SOP for phone usage?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I don't have one, but I talked to Kyle Randall from Loveton, they do supply phones for their officers, they do have a SOP. So, if that something has granted, we can work on that before the year's up.
Comments from other council members on the cell phones? It's just a good reminder to them, you know, that line of work, you're in that line of work, 24/7, 365. That's the way the public looks at it.
Who's it for me?
Any, so, everyone in agreement with the police budget? Seeing none, let's move on to the Fire Department. Again, Les has given us a little information about a substantial increase on the shared inspector position with the building and zoning.
What, I, this is maybe a question that's maybe leading into Kurtz as well. What vehicle is this new employee gonna drive?
Mine.
That's why you need, yeah, alright.
Any comments? If not, we'll move on to City Hall. Any comments on City Hall?
Our innovations are done, is there anything else to wrap up?
Well, Phyllis and I talked about that today, that was one of my questions. She has $25,000 in, if you see on there, it's a City Hall improvements, 25,000. So, I don't know what it would be, it would cost more than that. I mean, it's basically preventive maintenance at this point. Yeah, there's some things we may wanna add upstairs, especially in that conference room, to make it a little more.
User.
Yeah, user friendly.
Do you want me to put more in there? I could tap it down.
Have you, for the break room upstairs, there's still some things coming, those are some, you got that accounted for?
I can add that out in the year.
This year, yeah, okay.
I think that's good.
Yeah. Okay, moving on. What do we got here? Kurtz, he's got replacing Sharon, plus adding the office administrator, which is gonna be a shared employee, excuse me, the shared, the office administrator will be Aaron. And then the replacing Sharon with the assistant superintendent, that's gonna be the shared employee with the Fire Department for fire inspection. Otherwise, Kurt has nothing big, other than him getting a new vehicle, which is needed. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move on. Sanitation budget comes into Jeremy. Jeremy's saying that we haven't added any staff to that department in some time.
Our routes are up. Check with Kevin today, they're up at 300 stops since we last did the review and the rate increase back in 2010, 2011. That is currently today, 300 stops without the non-active, without the empty rentals and stuff, so, you know, the routes have increased immensely. The recycling has taken off, you know, you have divided services.
So.
With that, we're providing in that department, which the money that we're charging and bringing in that department is basically self-reliant.
So, your budget, you didn't, you know, line item it to where we could see a change? Was it, the collectors, was that three before, now it's four?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that, is that basically the only change?
Basically, other than, we're gonna need to replace a garbage truck, and I talked with Phyllis a bunch of times, and rolling, the past, split it up, chassis one year, box the following year, but right now, the box companies and chassis manufacturers have got together, are putting together demo units to where the brand-new equipped vehicles, they're taking them around, they have to do like 20 demos in different municipalities. And with that, if you demo it, you get, basically say, hey, you know, we would be interested, basically you're on the list to purchase one of those demo units at the end of the 20 visits at a pretty discounted rate. So, it makes sense trying to get on one of those demo units whenever that timeframe comes up. I talked with both manufacturers in the last two to three weeks, they're in the process of building more of these trucks, so it may be the line, you know, springtime of next year that they consider ending up buying more of these trucks.
But the number you provided is, that's not discounted, that's the new?
That's the new, the new rate, so there could be some discount there.
Is the old one worth anything?
What's that?
Is a 15-year-old truck worth anything?
Not a whole lot. We're looking at some options on that truck, as to possibly re-use it in-house. It has much like, we could potentially use it for, basically shorten it up, put like a dump body or something on it. It's more so that it's getting aged to where those garbage trucks are out every day, they're getting a lot of hours and stuff on them. The boxes are starting to get rotted out, if you will, they're getting a lot of age on it, there's a lot of moving parts on those boxes. So, if we're gonna provide a good quality service to the customers like we have been, you know, we really need to keep up with the times.
Other comments, questions?
I'm asking people's trash.
Seeing none, we'll go to common council.
I guess my only question on this is the utility, I know that today includes Northwest.
Same question I had.
Does it include the Hyatt?
Yeah, I think they did. I think I did, I put this shit all down, so. Actually, the utility includes a lot of buildings, the Congress Park, Marcus Building.
City Hall, Plaza, Depot.
City Hall, the Depot, you know, the playstation.
Streetlights, you said, today.
City streetlight.
We're still paying for the old playstation. Utilities.
They do reimburse us.
And while that, while that figure is $14,700, and we all know that, we were told that Northwest Elementary, the utilities there when occupied was around $61,000 for a year. So, it's to our, we need to get that place occupied, so. Otherwise, I mean, it's not that much when it's not occupied. I think last month, it was like $900 or something like that for the electric, but. And Phyllis has 60-some-odd thousand dollars set aside for that in another account, right? Another place, another line item somewhere?
Well, I already had cushion in utilities already in 19, but, so I wouldn't have to invest so much for next year.
Okay.
But there should be enough in there to cover that.
Okay. Jeremy says it's basically showing market increases. We've been working on our buildings, trying to make more room to get our many pieces of equipment inside, out of the weather. Shows an increase of $15,000 in this account to cover more of the work, including some overhead doors. Need to replace two pickup trucks.
I was gonna say, we just need to take the Kurtz truck, but I guess that's not gonna happen.
Comments or questions on the MVH budget? Seeing none, we'll go on to Park and Rec. Uh, looks like really.
He had added an employee for 19.
Excuse me?
Did we add an employee?
We added an employee in 19, right, Jeremy?
Yes.
Stan Fried?
To kinda take, was he dedicated to Handman?
No, no.
Not exactly.
He added the park and rec budget.
In 19, he was, right, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna be, my question, are we starting to look at future costs for managing Handman? Is there anything in the budget that's gonna reflect that?
Jeremy?
Is there a need to begin moving in that direction?
I do have some cost estimates somewhat figured into the budget for Handman Park, and there's a lot of unknowns with that facility, just like any other new facility that you have. Part of the concerns from the lots are figured into it, but obviously, going into '21, you know, we're gonna have a better idea of, you know, any additional that we're gonna need. The problem that we run into, Phyllis and I talked about this about every mayor in June, is the money coming in from state. You know, we just don't get a lot in park money, so we may have to get a little creative going forward as you develop more with, you know, Riverfront, you know, Plaza, Handman Park and other projects, as to how we can appropriate money out of other funds to help offset some of the operating costs.
Yeah, actually, that's the precursor to what I was going to bring up when we get to a two-year plan.
Well, I guess, while we're here, there, at this point, though, I mean, it may be my suggestion that we budget for a full-time person for Handman Park, if it needs to be added into, line item, but we're gonna put this amount of money into a park, there's gotta be one person that gets hired to take care of this park, and if this park is up and running this summer, then there should be some money available to at least entice someone to come take care of this park.
Well, I think Jeremy has the person on staff right now that he wants to put out there, but then he may need to replace that person with.
And that was also leading into '21, you know, you can do that in '20. I'm not gonna throw what, you know, push away additional help, especially with everything that we get into on a daily basis, but I was definitely gonna go there in '21.
Which is something I heard repeatedly this summer. I sure hope when we build this new park, we're gonna maintain it, and then some, being at the ballpark. I'm not saying we weren't maintaining the parks, I'm just saying it's a big investment.
And I totally agree, man, I really do. But for 30 years, we've had one full-time employee over there.
Right.
And then the rest of us, retired guys on lawnmowers. You know, no offense to the guys on lawnmowers, they do a very nice job, but when it comes down to one person, the years, you know, I appreciate your comment, Todd, because I think it's definitely gonna be needed. Probably sooner than later.
I would like to see it in this year's budget, me personally, because that's a, if you don't use it, it's gonna go back into the general fund anyways, but we need to have the money available to get that person, or replace a person that needs to be replaced, because they're playing ball on it.
That's why I asked the question, you know, are we including that in this budget?
And you have to look at long-term, you know, we don't know how long Sue's gonna stay working, you know, soon as, soon as at the point that, you know, I don't know if it's gonna be three years, soon as it's gonna be five years, soon as it's gonna be seven years, soon as it's gonna be next year, you know, that, she just don't, she never talks about retiring, because she's still always doing her job. But you also have to get people in, you know, to help absorb some of Sue's duties that she's done for 30 years, and then also learn the ropes of eventually taking over some of those responsibilities.
Also, for Park and Rec, just sort of mention that we're gonna be buying all of these properties to do flood mitigation and Park and Rec moves all those.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just more. We added an employee last year, but I, we've added more park in the last year than what we have.
Right.
Right, if you like.
So, what do you think, Jeremy, about $49,000? I'm looking at your 244 for five employees, so that averages about 48.8 per employee, or 49,000?
Yeah, right, right in there, right in that general.
Would you like to add that?
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna turn it down.
Whether we, whether we hire the person right away or not, it's a.
There's gonna be a lot happening now again.
Oh, I agree. I'm tickled about this, I like it.
And Phyllis also makes a very valid point, talking abroad, you know, you could get works of 24 more homes here in a very short period of time.
Just more general mowing, maybe. I would recommend that we add $49,000 to Jeremy's budget for additional staffing. Everybody good with that?
Very good with that.
Thank you.
The rest, the rest of it's basically, it's general market increases, and then a pickup truck that we definitely need to replace, it's 1992 or '93, and it's plopped snow since day one, and it's probably will plop snow today or. So, and then also, the River Grayway, Trussell Bridge, we still have some hard numbers on that, but that wood structure is getting in a really, really bad shape, so we may need to come back, later on this fall or this winter, discuss some other funding options to replace that railing and that floor over there. That's probably gonna need to be outside the park. So, you know, a lot of this stuff's hitting the life cycle.
Mm-hmm. What's on, right now, there's a, it's a treated to by something or other on there, right?
What they did is they took the old River Trussell Bridge.
Yeah.
They left the ties on it.
And then they put.
They feel the ties, and then they started building on top of the ties.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the ties are getting pretty well rotten. A lot of the, the structure members under there, under the actual bridge itself where you walk on, starting to get deteriorated. It's still safe, you know, don't get there on.
Anyone chill here?
And I wanna stress that, we've done a lot of maintenance and stuff on it over the years, but at some point, maintenance is maintenance, and you have to get deeper into that.
Yeah, I would look at it, I mean, as far as the center structure, can't see underneath of it, but it was still pretty sound, but the 4x4s on the sides, don't get me wrong, or the rear road tie on the side were rotted, but I think that would be too big of a task to replace, but I guess I didn't get underneath it and look either, so.
Yeah, and I was looking more guidance from you as to, you know, with your construction background of, you know, what do we think in 40,000, 50,000, 5,000?
In my, I think it would be in the 20,000. From what I've seen, the reality to me didn't look like it was in too awful a shape, it was just the rear road ties running down both sides where they need to be taken up, and something new put in there, treated, post, or.
That quote.
Could they be used rear road ties?
Possibly, yeah. I thought about telephone poles, I've seen guys that they got the telephone poles, and it's way easier to get them in there, but.
I think we can get some rear road ties.
I know you can get rear road ties, I can get some rear road ties.
Some good ones.
Yeah.
But yeah, you know, there's, we're going through, and, you know, you guys see it within the budgets and see it within the life cycle, so we're doing a lot more maintenance, we're doing a lot more upkeep, we're doing a lot of replacement stuff, so, you know, I just wanna stress, everything has its life cycle. So, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeremy. Uh, next up is the Civil City, which has the pensions for the firefighters and the police officers, and there's not much we can do about that. And then we get to the CCD. That's nothing we can really do anything about either, right?
The only thing I put in there was, since we have our debt yet for City Hall and the playstation, I have to see, of course, and then I just put in 60,000 for the 3rd Street street skate.
Which is part of what, yeah, okay.
So, any others that, just, sometimes you need professional services for certain things.
Right.
I just put that in there, time for other stuff to charge us.
Okay.
There's not much change.
Blow it. Blow it, fire. Blow it, fire.
With the conversation that was earlier about the engine.
Mm-hmm.
So do you have a know what the balance right now is?
Well, I figured it for us, because we were kinda calculating it and I just estimated what we're gonna get for revenues for next year, plus the fire vehicle fund. And we would have like eight hundred eighty, eight hundred eighty thousand in there to pay for the fire truck. I think that's right, plus the estimating, I'd say, or if you know, the fire trucks, aren't you estimating about eight hundred thousand for the new fire truck?
At least, at least. Then there would be, then there would be loose equipment about the...
Okay. Okay.
There had been a balance in there, over there, I don't know, try to pull it up for them.
Comments? It also has the police right there following that, and Lonnie has it broke down where the differences are. No comments? Moving on, getting there folks. Decatur Civil City, um, oh, local road and street, there, I see it, yep. And that's just our normal cracked seal or slurry seal. Moving on, police local law budget. Not much difference there. Riverboat. Again, Phyllis has some Second Street streetscape funds in there, capital project funds. Okay. Rainy Day Fund, she's got community crossings, NDOT fund money in there, city sidewalk improvements.
Is that, we had talked about increasing that budget for the issue down seventeen three, does that reflect that?
I think so. Isn't a hundred what we've had been running in there? So we did not increase sidewalks, but we did...
You have, you have money in favor also.
For sidewalks. Cause I think, when we talked at the la, couple of meetings ago about setting aside eight hundred thousand for two thousand and twenty, it was Hannah Nutman sidewalks, streetscape. If I'm not mistaken, does that sound right, Phyllis?
Yeah.
Yeah. There was some money that was initially set aside.
The, this, the money that's in here for the...
Build out.
Build out.
I just took it from that bit, from that.
So the money that was set aside for this year?
I just re-budgeted it. In case we don't do anything this year, I just re-budgeted it.
Because it's in the rainy day and stays in the rainy day, so it was just re-budgeted. Because rainy day only gets filled up when we fill it up. So that's the carryover.
Okay, good. CCI, cumulative capital improvements. Is it other services and charges, is that pretty much what we had last year, Phyllis? Is that a, you got plus twenty-five for IT and computers, yep. County IT system is definitely bumping this one up a little bit. Again, nothing we can do about that.
And then Riverside Center, definitely.
Connecting Riverside Center.
They need new cable in too, over there for...
Oh, for the internet? Yeah. I think they were gonna bounce a signal from our roof to that roof, if I'm not mistaken, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna work.
Okay. Redevelopment Commission?
Actually, I think redevelopment commission members came and addressed.
Yep, all of this, yep.
This is a reflection of their budget that they gave.
I bet council has to have...
Right.
Yep, yep. Okay. And then we get down to the CDAT Fund for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Phyllis is estimating one point four million dollars in income tax revenues over the next two years. Attached is the two-year plan from eighteen and nineteen, and then she has her suggestions here.
This is where I was looking at, you know, only, you know, we really feel strongly as a city about quality of life. And a major portion of that is our parks and our outdoor spaces. I think we need to support that and I'm really pleased tonight, uh, the decision to add that extra additional staff person. But I'm wondering if it can also, you know, there's continual park improvements needed, if we can carve out something from here to support it as well.
A standing percentage or...
Right. Some...
Well, as an example, we just replaced the bathrooms at American Legion Park because it was like at a point of no return. They really need replaced.
Right.
A long time ago.
Right.
And so, there's several areas, but while they may seem like little projects, they all add up.
And if, if Parks Department and the board knows, they can be proactive. You know, they do have a park plan, but this can help them maybe...
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you say delete.
Right, what is, what do we have to say, you think they don't find the Parks Department, find some of their projects, is basically what you're asking them?
Right. But C and C...
I feel like the Parks Department is just...
D, E.
For the last few years, they've gotten a lot of money that they can't handle, but I think something needs to help them.
That's what we like.
Which if we were able to pull a portion off this, maybe what they're, they can focus more on the operations, right?
Right.
This would be more of a capital improvement for parks.
And that would...
And if you, if you see what Phyllis says there in step C, she says delete and combine that with E for use in capital improvement, economic development projects. And you read on the promotional development of economic development projects, including, but not limited to, economic incentives, acquisition of real estate, infrastructure improvements, and then E is capital improvement projects, which could be quality of life, and you see that she's raised that. If you add those two from C and E up, it only adds up to nine hundred twenty-five thousand. She's got that at one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, and that's because more distribution. So that's a good thing.
I like what you're saying there, well, I mean, if you're able to just designate this for the parks.
Is this the same as that hundred there, or is this an additional?
While we're looking at financial projects or whatever, future...
Why, you see that there's the additional hundreds, that's over and above the other hundreds for sidewalks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's good too.
And you're seeing it also as the cost share to whatever that, the city president...
Fifty fifty plan.
But I think it's important that the park board have some idea of what that amount would be so they can truly play.
So are you suggesting adding like E and saying a dollar amount for park capital improvement projects?
Yep.
So then the question is, what's the dollar amount?
Before we do that, I'll turn another one at you. I mean, we obviously in the city have made a commitment to utilizing Northwest, right? And we have kind of, we've asked that Econo Development Corporation step in and kinda lead this. They have committed to funding the workforce development director basically through the end of the year. With the anticipation that there's gonna be a desire, I think we do desire to have that position continue to be funded.
We do.
So would it make sense, I know we're obligated to allocate thirteen percent, would it make sense to increase that? We're not gonna be required, I mean, when they send an invoice, right, it's based on that thirteen percent. But should we go ahead and reserve an additional amount in the anticipation of supporting Econo Development Corporation and workforce development initiatives for the benefit of the building that we are providing?
Yeah.
Right? I don't know what the, I did, I was like, okay, what if you went to fifteen percent, right? Instead of ninety, it would be a hundred and three, if you went to sixteen percent, we'd be a hundred and ten. So that's twenty thousand dollars above what we have, we are committed to, that we'd be willing, I guess, to put towards those efforts. Just a thought. I don't, I mean, you could take that at any percentage, but that just gives us, I have no idea if we're gonna be asked for that, but...
I think it would be important that we be prepared for that because we have committed by actually taking...
Accepting.
And accepting Northwest.
I think it would be a huge step in showing our, um, whether or not we're asking, proceeding with it.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
So what percentage would you like to go to, Cam?
I, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, I mean, fifteen, fifteen percent would take us up another twenty grand.
Yeah, the percentage, well, it doesn't need to be determined right now, does it?
Well, the money that I have estimated, that's all, that's what I'm estimating that we're gonna have.
And if it's not spent, it's not like it...
Or fourteen, or not four million more.
Right, right. Well, I was turning this over to them.
Sixteen percent.
Okay, and then, how much for the park?
What are your thoughts on this, Jeremy, of the parks, I mean...
I only thought about half your Congress.
We're saying that in this capital improvement plan, we'd like to, with council, dedicate some money toward the parks so that they know they have money coming to do capital improvements. I mean, I feel like, I don't, I haven't attended the park board meetings, but I feel like they do well with the money they have, but they have a capital, a parks plan, that some of these goals are larger goals, harder to reach with, obviously more money would help them reach that goal, is that something?
Oh, definitely, because like at Legion Park this year.
Right.
You know, we had the issue with the restoration last year. You guys had to kick in money to replace just about one structure, you know, due to, you know, our hands gotta be strapped on, on funding something in and, you know, getting our levy and, you know, the whole nine yards. There is a lot of projects out there. You know, we talk immensely about projects and the different park locations, but you can only talk so much about these projects without having the funding, you know, kind of the excitement, some of the interest starts to go away after you just continually keep talking about and knowing that.
No funds.
Help from somewhere, if not them. You know, I know you guys wanna do some more Riverfront, Splash Pad, some other things in different areas, you know, we can't do that.
On your budget.
That's a work.
Correct. Your, your budget's maintained. Yeah.
You know, we need more of a capital outlay.
So do we set aside an amount that the park board is entitled to every year, is that how that would work, or?
That's what I'm suggesting, we walk, we do that.
And that's how I feel, that, I mean, if we're talking quality of place, I mean, the first thing is parks, you know, they don't have the money to keep up the parks or make better parks or update our parks, then we're not doing any justice.
Right.
Granted, we gave a lot of money down to this facade programs and stuff, it's helped greatly, but that's one facet of quality of life. And if you don't have nice parks, then you're not gonna attract anybody, I mean...
And a lot of the things that we've been able to accomplish as the city park board has been just getting created. But how are we gonna get this to, you know, I can, I talked to Phyllis periodically and a lot of times, Phyllis, I can get us, you keep thinking. You know, but, you know, we work together as a group, you know, all the guys and everything, and, you know, whether it's material or labor or whatever, you know, that's how we've been able to get these small steps taken here. But once you get into the larger steps, I comment earlier about everything has a life cycle, you know, that's what makes it interesting just one.
So I think now it's just determining what is that dollar amount.
Well, the nice thing is, is that we can always, the others, there's a lot of ways that we can use the other seven hundred thousand dollars, right? It's for capital improvement projects, if we so choose to add it to that for a stated purpose, we could do that, but maybe starting off with a set amount that could be, could be built up. I don't know, I'm just, a hundred thousand comes to my mind, but are we, are we pigeonholing ourselves if we do that?
I would love to see that.
What do you mean by pigeonholing?
Well, I mean, if it's not used for that, I mean, we're required to use it for that, we have it in there, right? If we put, if we say we're gonna spend a hundred thousand there, give a hundred thousand to the Parks Department, we're required to do that by, from a resolution?
This will be adopted by our board.
Yeah.
But we could also accumulate that over a period of time for a large capital park project. But I think, putting, putting a surplus in the park and rec for twenty twenty, it's not a bad thing. I mean, at Hannah Nutman, there's gonna be a playground, yeah, we've raised money and we've budgeted money, but Jeremy and I were talking today, you know, we don't know exactly what kind of equipment is gonna be available. And I mean, what he took out of there wasn't really worth saving, we're gonna need all new stuff.
We could, but I think for their sake, it should be earmarked.
Another option is, when I figure the next step is calculating all the budgets, we could put more tax levy towards park and rec instead of the general fund too. I mean, we could do that too. If you want, down to more tax dollars.
I think it is important to have some amount for capital improvements that the board knows they can work with. And it doesn't mean that they're limited to that either.
But that's kinda how we're spending the money already. If you think about what other projects we have talked about, but we have not, it's parks related.
Now, we've talked about Splash Pad, we've talked about water facility, we've talked about the back part of Hannah Nutman, and those are all park.
By giving them that money...
Riverfront is park.
That allows them to move forward with their capital projects.
Right, but they already have a plan, and I'm sure you're going to be developing that plan, right?
Yes, we're actually, we're in the process now of updating. There's a lot of projects, probably about half or more that have been completed, so we're adding a few minutes we could open to get it basically adopted by both boards. Because for the, the simple fact is, South Adams Trails also kind of piggybacks off of that plan for the trail planning in the south. And they also use the five-year park plan for their grant opportunities, you know, still moving the trail and stuff forward to Bittero and Hill Burn and Bittero and such, and where, you know, we have a trail plan as a city, or, you know, some sidewalk plans, some different, some different things that kinda all goes, kinda plays into the redevelopment commissions project with Thirteen Street, kinda plays into, you know, just the city in general, a lot of the things that we've been doing. And then with the county parks also, with each trail extensions and stuff like that, so, you know, I love what you guys are thinking here because in order to make a lot of these things happen, we were gonna have to have this conversation at some point, as to how we generate more revenue for these capital outlay projects.
I threw a hundred out there, I don't know if that's enough, maybe?
What's a start?
And again, that's earmarked, we can always, through the other fund, give more.
Correct.
Where does that come from in here?
I wanna go back real quick, sorry, change. The, the percentage for Economic Development Corporation... The, the percentage for Economic Development Corporation, I'm actually just, it's really because, as I look at what is required to keep, if you do a pro-rata, assuming all communities, and what's required to keep, it's gotta require that from us. So it, it takes the total up to 116 from 90.
Excellent.
So we just have a 4 percent addition that we're, we're willing to.
Is that a motion?
For Northwest, for, for Economic Development Corporation.
Okay.
Instead of 13 or 17. I don't know. We actually do a motion because we're gonna take this ordinance.
Yes. I, I will, yeah, 'cause I gotta draft up this ordinance and remember the two-year plan. So all these are for two years.
Right.
Do you want $300,000 for each year?
So we're, we're asked, I'm sorry?
Did you want a total of 300 for parking racks for the two years? Is that what you're thinking?
200?
200.
100 a year.
100 a year? Oh, I thought it was the 300. I don't know where I got that. I was wishing.
Jeremy, Jeremy's failing up.
It might stretch sooner or later, huh?
I should have come in next year. No.
So 100 each year?
Yeah. And then, do we want to earmark something for the Northwest School then? Did you say six, what'd you say?
From 13 to 17 percent.
13 to 17, okay. And that covers us?
Well, he's basically not technically putting in Northwest School, but just the-
We'd be making available to Economic Development for the support of workforce development, which they're spearheading for in our county.
Okay.
And we're not being called upon that yet. I just think we need to be prepared to.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
We are changing economic development.
To 17. Okay. Any other comments? I guess what I would look for then would be a motion to approve all the changes that we made in tonight's budget for 2020.
Second?
A motion in the second that we approve all the changes to the proposed budget for 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, fellas and department heads. I know it's a lot of work for all of you to put all this together. I do have a few other things on the agenda, but-
Wait, you mind if I go ahead and just-
Finish the budget stuff, fellas. Go ahead.
That's step one.
Okay.
That's just the first process of the budget. So next is all the revenues, and I have copies for everybody. These are miscellaneous revenues that'll come in from-
Pass them down.
And then, the tax dollars. Listen, we do want copies, yes, now. So on top of there is, the first one is transferring money from the rainy day, which we passed last meeting, $500,000. It has all our ABC, excise tax, cigarette tax, financial institution tax, vehicle tax. We do a payment in lieu of taxes for the utility office pay for city debt matches per year. The, our lit certified shares distribution, building permit, table franchise license, parking receipts, rental properties, trash collection, any reimbursements from the state, and our interest earnings. That all goes into the general fund. And then it goes down to each, each department or fund has basically all the taxes up there. And, I don't know if there's anything else.
On, obviously you got, the first column is six months, the remainder of the year, and then you got-
Yeah, so when you read this, yeah, it's the first, it's the rest of this year, and the next column is all of next year.
So why is, like, R119, state federal local payment in lieu of tax?
Because we didn't receive the money until the second half.
Oh.
After June, we receive the money in there, and then all of next year will be that.
Okay.
It's just one that's distributed.
And then on the lit distributions, I just put at 95 percent, 'cause those amounts aren't certified yet. The department, local government finance estimate the cigarette tax and the financial institution tax, the vehicle tax. They've all came in. So if you have any questions on that? Any questions?
I just, excuse me, go ahead.
Our tax caps aren't calculated on any of these budgets yet. We'll also have to calculate that. And then we'll have our public hearing September 17th, and then our adoption will be October 1st. And then also, if everybody's okay with the budget, another thing I have to do is salary ordinance. So are you guys okay with the 10 percent for your approved budget?
I just want to thank Phyllis, 'cause I know she has worked extremely hard on this. At home, in the office. She's been working on this for a few months, and it's, it's not an easy process. And I don't envy her to try to come up with all this. So thank you, Phyllis, for a good job. I started to say, I have a couple of things on the agenda, but I see some young adolescents here that have been sitting very patiently. And rather than make them wait till the meeting is over and then call on the public, I think I will go ahead and call on the public now. So whatever you're here for this evening, please, if you wanna come forward and, and share. And then when you come forward, we always ask that you state your name, so we have it for the record.
I'm Jen Goble, and this is Lauren Goble.
Lauren, L-A-U-R-E-N. Okay? Go ahead, Lauren. Don't be, don't be, don't be, don't be nervous.
Okay, I'm an eighth grader at Belmont Middle School. As you're positively aware, the North Adam School District has recently established a proximity zone around school campus where bus transportation is no longer offered. We live within this zone. While there are very few safety precautions in place for us when we are walking our bikes into school. The sidewalk along the north side of East Monroe Street is narrow and in poor repair. I've nearly wrecked my bike where there is a drop-off next to the sidewalk. There are no crosswalks at any of the major points we have chosen to cross to get to school, and there are no crossing guards in place. The school staff is doing their best to help, but they have other responsibilities and can't be in charge of making sure kids can cross the street safely. At last week's school board meeting, this issue was discussed, with the end result being that the school district can't hire a crossing guard. That is a city responsibility. I've been walking my bike into school with my brothers and my mom for the past week. It's safe, most of the time. In order to cross East Monroe Street, we have to wait several minutes for a vehicle to stop and let us through. For the moment, drivers are on their best behavior, and it's light out at 7:30 AM. But it's early in the school year, and things may look very different in November. There aren't very many kids walking or biking to school right now, and that is to a large extent because the safety precautions are not in place. Parents are choosing to drive their children to school, adding to the already congested traffic because it's safer. We can't risk the safety of even a few kids just because most parents have the resources in place to drive their kids. The school board feels that the district can't take further action. Therefore, I'm asking the city council to step in to make sure everyone can travel safely to school. I believe the city needs to put crossing guards in place until crosswalk schools are signed, sidewalk repairs, and other measures are implemented to make walking to school safe for all of us.
Thank you, Lauren. I would ask that Lenny, Chief of Police, and Jeremy, or Street Superintendent, if you'd both come up so we can ask and answer some questions. First of all, Jeremy, update them on paving and signs and crosswalks and all that.
In January, we awarded Brooks Construction a paving package through the community crossings grant funded through it. That was awarded, obviously, behind schedule. That is now scheduled for in the week of September 23rd. It's supposed to be completed by now, obviously, with all the rain in the spring months, get pushed everywhere, so everybody doesn't want us to go back. What that project's gonna do is, that project will repave, no one repaves, all of the nerve street all the way out. It will replace all the pavement markings, all the crosswalks. Also, in a separate contract, Oak Street will be repaved, will be lightened out, marked for pedestrian walkways. So most of the handicap ramps will be replaced, so it's a state crossing, basically in Stratton, there will be a few added to come across through the marked spots. They lighted pedestrian crossing signs, will go up whenever they show up, here hopefully soon.
Explain lighted pedestrian crossing signs for everyone.
Basically, what, what it will be is, it will be a solar-powered pedestrian crossing that will be on a timer, because most people probably won't remember to push the button. It will not look, if you do the button, it would be like, your crossing's here. How many people will push the buttons? A lot, a lot of them will push them until they stay in there for a long time and realize lights, I don't turn until you push them. So what I did is I got the programmable buttons to where, like, an hour before school, it will sit there and flash. And an hour, when school lets out from like 7 to 8, even 7:00, whatever you want, sir. But for an example, 7 to 8, it will flash warning that it is a crossing. There will be one there at the middle school entrance, and then one there also at Pickway and Eastbrook.
And Stratton? Want to Stratton area?
We only got four for right now. We could order more.
Okay. So explain, where are the four again?
If we determine that we need more, at the middle school entrance, on Monroe Street.
Right.
There will be two there, and then two at Pickway and Eastbrook, basically where they come across their by former bear issues.
Right.
They come relatively soon, once you order, once you get programming and stuff set. You know, if we end up having to need another set, we can order another set.
So right now, we don't have anything in, in place for the Harvester Lane, Hog Street crossing?
No, no.
Okay.
I checked on the building today and the shipping, and he thought they would come today or tomorrow. But we don't, we do not do that, they installed us, do the warranty and liability, that company will come then, once everything arrives here. So I can't give you that day or a time or anything, it's the one that's gonna happen.
And the repaving is on through sidewalk right here?
No.
So, so the kids coming from the Stratton addition, they'll cross East Monroe where there is no crosswalk.
Right now, there, right now, there's not.
Right, right. And, because they have to cross to get to the sidewalk on the other side.
There will be a handicap ramp at Harvester Lane, put in Harvester Lane and East Monroe Street to get them across. It will be the same thing across where it goes into pedestrian walkway. We have to do that per agreement.
Got it.
And then there will be another one, another, down at the other, some signs that we put up at, at East Monroe and the entrance to the school, to make ADA compliant to get across. And then they will re, re-straight and put in all the crosswalks per code, once the paving is completed. We have no control over the contractors. I, I sure wish it would've been done back in June.
Yep.
They, they would like to push it off for fall break, but they can't push it off for fall break due to completion, have a completion date of October 8th. So they may be working the weekends, they may be working Saturdays and Sundays.
Which I hope they do.
To, to make sure-
Because then school's not in session.
-that everything is complete. You have to remember, we still have about 28 or 29 streets in the city of Decatur that needs to be paved by mid-October. So there's gonna be some disruption. There's gonna be probably some angry parents in the mornings, if they had weight on a paper, or they had weight on a milling machine, or they had weight on a dump truck. But, but that, that's just the hand that we're given at this point, because everyone's so far behind.
Cam, you'll say something?
First of all, thanks for coming in.
Yes.
Awesome job. I think you're, you're very articulate and well done, okay?
Thank you.
But yes, that sidewalk there on the north side of East Monroe is bad. I've been up and down, rode my bike with my, with my kids on the other week, and I like, don't, and it's narrow, right? So you have to recognize that. And I don't know if you heard us talk before about the additional out in 17th Street. There's, there's other areas of town that, because of this whole issue, don't have any sidewalks.
Right.
Right? So we are trying to focus on, okay, early mornings, we need them to be on sidewalks so they can get to the bus pickup spot. But, so while that's not on the dock now, right? Don't think that we have, we've forgotten about it. But that is a, the length of that sidewalk is extensive, and-
Yes.
It's gonna take some serious planning to get that done.
And in addition to, in addition to the north side, then, once you head out East Monroe Street, then you come to some residences on the south side of the road, and there's no sidewalks there. And, and for the kids coming out of those subdivisions, we need sidewalks, 'cause we can't put crosswalks unless there's sidewalks on both sides of the streets. Right, Jeremy?
Basically, the sidewalk, they have to-
So there's some areas on the other side of the street that we probably would have to focus on some sidewalks before the, before we repair the north side as well. What I wanted to call Lenny up here for is, one of Lauren's comments was crossguards, okay? And the school, I believe, is correct, that, you know, I've talked to some other municipalities that have crossing guards, and they're budgeted through our police department, through their police department. So I, you know, it's something we have never considered, you know, back in the day when I was a kid, we had sixth grade kids that were the crossing guards, you know? And, and it's not that way anymore. If you put a sixth grade kid out there to try to be a crossguard, they're not gonna be respected by the general public. And, you know, the reason that I think they do it through the police department is they can be trained and they can have authority, okay? To actually cite someone for disobeying a, a, a law. We don't have it budgeted right now, and I don't know if we, you know, we're just talking in the budget.
Doesn't that fall under laws of public safety? Couldn't you?
And, you know, it's one of those things that we can't snap our fingers and just have it done. But I, I still wanna, you know, have Lenny look into how some other municipalities, you know, how much does it pay? What hours do they work? How many hours a day does it involve? You know, what's the, the criteria for someone to be qualified? And what kind of training can they get? So there's a lot of unanswered questions on that as well, but we hear you.
We need to get those questions before-
I hear you.
-before it gets hit.
Yep. I agree. We, we do agree. The crosswalk will be coming in September. Unfortunately, until then, it's just, I'm sorry, you know, just, you know, we thought Brooks Paving would've been here and out of here a long time ago.
Okay. So if, I can ask one more question. Tell me one more time. So if my kids are crossing from Harvester Lane across to Oak Street, you said that there's a, a ramp, there's a-
There will be, and handicap ramps will be in, in, in a second.
But that does, that doesn't have anything to do with the actual crossing of the street.
Right. So crossing the street is still, we stand there and wait for cars to stop? I mean, is that basically-
Potentially, unless we have ordered-
Jen, do you have any idea how many kids are walking out of Stratton right now in the school?
Right now, it's mine. Everybody else is driving their kids because it's not safe. It's scary. And I go with my kids every day.
You both live in Stratton?
So the, real quick, though, the sidewalk issue, the, the plan is to actually utilize hog, right? When we repave that, you can make that and put up a pedestrian path and that, which would take you over to the sidewalk that is-
Right.
-protected. I do think that, you know, if we've got four, that I do think it makes sense to think about that intersection there, right? Harvester to Og. Can we go ahead and get two more of those signs?
Okay. I would agree with that, too. There are about $30,000 of intersection.
Per sign or per intersection?
Per intersection.
I, I know I talked to the bus driver that drove that route last year, and there were 30-plus kids that rode the bus. Right now, most of those parents are able to drive their kids. I can drive mine sometimes, you know, when the- I can drive mine sometimes, you know, when the trombone has to go or it's raining, but I, I can't do that every day. And so, you know, my kids bike or walk some of the time, and we need to make sure that they're safe. You know, even if it is just a few kids.
Yep. The signs are expensive, but you can't put a price on the life, so that's, I would agree, let's get two more.
He can add to the order then, and it would be on a separate order because the, the, the.
Now, these don't get you across the street, these are just gonna be flashing lights during the school come and go time, but at least will bring some attention.
It'll help drivers be aware.
Now, when the light is flashing, Jeremy, is that an indication that they have to yield to the pedestrian or not?
They should.
In theory, I mean, I'm not saying.
What do you think about?
But also, in that, it has the, uh, the sign like, like we set out in secondary.
What about putting a couple of those out there?
Also build in to that poster in that sign, it does have that sign also on there that says.
Yield to pedestrian?
Yield or stop to pedestrian traffic, so.
Do you have any more of those?
That comes with this.
It's, it's.
Okay.
It'll be the toll on one.
Okay, so it's gonna be a sign plus one of those things that can set out in the middle of the street?
The big sign there that points down to the, to the crossing, its light gets lit.
Okay, so therefore, we, therefore, we do have an enforcement means.
Then the other sign is.
Correct, Lenny?
I'm sorry, what?
So, we would have an enforcement means if people aren't yielding to the pedestrians, okay?
So, what do we, what do we do, do you get two more signs? That's my question.
We didn't, we didn't approve the first four, so he can just go ahead and get them out of his.
We're doing it.
I waited on the answer on the first four.
And again, I'm just wondering, with this whole issue, because it is so big, I'm not trying, we're not taking away fire truck, but is this an allowable use for low it public safety?
It has to be for the place station or the fire station, I don't know if it's public safety. I think it has to go towards there and to the front side.
To give you an idea, when Ken and I and Don were together in Ken's office a couple of weeks ago, when I spotted this guy brought up before school started, to give you kind of a ballpark number, I think we came up with like two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars to replace the sidewalks all the way from, basically, expert, uh, that they might even be. And that was, I think, based on about a, a eight-foot light walk, if you want that light, you know, you're probably well, one fifty-ish range, if you put back what you had and maybe make it a little bit lighter, so.
I think the.
It's gonna be doable at some point, it's just putting priority on getting at least a good portion of that replaced, you know, it may take you a couple of years.
I think if we get the signs to help them get across the street and get them into Hog Street, it gets them off from Monroe Street period so that they're inside where people should be going slower.
We're trying to get them into the campus or the institute there at the crossings, because when you're coming basically out of Eastbrook, Central Brook, Eastbrook, all that, they can come straight across out of the addition again on the school property. Same way going out of Belmont State, if you cross there at the school entrance, you can get across. You're onto the school campus. The same thing at Hog Street, around Stratton, if you get across, you're on the school campus. And then, sorry, Lenny, but that, at that point, it kind of becomes a, kind of a traffic between Trent and, and the first shift, kind of watching, you know, what, what goes on.
Well, I told my guy to, to float down East Monroe Street in the morning, because if you know, there is a twenty mile per hour sunning.
Correct.
But obviously, if there's other calls they would have to go to, but I tried to get him down there to do that. At this point, I was there for the first week, first three days of school, and it was horrendous, it got a little bit better, but, you know, as far as the pedestrian part, you know, that's when we, I saw parents walking with kids, and, you know, we tried to, you know, we do have a pedestrian safety class we offer to our kids, we hope that they use those skills that they learn to look out for the drivers and the cars going fast and on their phone. You know, obviously, we can't do it all the time, but we try to get there as much as possible, because you're right, I don't wanna see a kid get hurt.
Right.
And I tell you what, if a person did hit a kid, they're gonna feel disorganized horrible because they was in a rush to go nowhere. So, I'm hoping that the kids, especially the big brothers and big sisters, take their little brothers and make sure they walk safely across, parents too, until we get kind of situated here with the sidewalks and the signs.
Yeah, and it sounds like if I put on a plan before, it's dark in the morning, I think that we're in good shape.
And, and I'll be honest with you, with the school structure like that, it really took me by surprise, all disorganized. They did as far as pickup and drop off. I was out there with Trent busting my text exam Wednesday, and it was unbelievable, so I think now it's getting better, there's like a plan, but still, there can always be use for improvement.
Is it better this week?
It seems really no problem.
It seems, for me, driving by it every day, it was really clogged up, and it's gotten better even today versus last week. Good, good to hear.
And also, the comment with the darkness is we are replacing the streetlights out there. There are parts, a lot of them that are very aged, that are on LED. I don't know how soon our contractor will be there, I ask him to get up, get up before time change, because it will be dark in the mornings. That's gonna help that immensely out, Jeremy, just at the crossings and that all.
Lauren, thanks for coming. What's your brother's name?
Ben.
Ben, thanks for sitting there and being patient all this time, all right?
You did great.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, next thing we have is a resolution which formally commits two and a half million dollars over the next five years for capital improvement projects. We discussed this at the last meeting, we okayed it, and Tim, I think, is prepared an ordinance. Resolution. A resolution, excuse me, to move forward with that. What is that resolution number, Tim?
Two thousand nineteen dash six.
Any questions before I look for a motion to introduce it?
I'll make a motion then to introduce Resolution twenty nineteen dash six by short title only.
Second. Motion and a second to introduce Resolution two thousand nineteen dash six by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Resolution two thousand nineteen dash six, short title Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which expresses council's support of numerous capital projects to be undertaken within the next five years and which commits city funds for such capital projects.
We'll make a motion to pass Resolution twenty nineteen dash six.
Motion and a second for passage of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next thing that I have to report, pass those down, and I'll give the two of you copies of this when I'm done here. Yesterday, August nineteenth, I received seventy, sixty-nine pages from FEMA for our state and local agreement for the flood buyout, for the homes, for the eighteen homes. I still have not received it for Evergreen Assisted Living, but this at least gets us to the next phase of moving forward on the homes. Rod Rankenberger, he provided me with a statement, I just passed it out to the council members, and I'll read this and I'll give you copies of it, because our homeowners that are affected by this definitely have, will have questions. It's a status report for, and this is our two thousand seventeen pre-disaster mitigation grant program acquisition project. Now that Decatur has received a state and local grant agreement, we must wait on all appraisals to be completed before we begin meeting with individual homeowners. I believe the vast majority of them are done, but maybe not all of them, I'm not sure. Once all appraisals have been completed, I will coordinate, now, when I say aye, this is Rod Rankenberger, I will coordinate with Mayor Meyer, City Attorney Tim Baker, Street Department Superintendent Jeremy Gilbert, to ensure that all FEMA requirements can be met as we methodically move this project forward. Since we will be dealing with the potential purchase of eighteen structures, it's important to note that this project will not be implemented overnight. Therefore, we respectfully request participants' patience as we move forward. In the ensuing weeks, I will be contacting participants by telephone for the purpose of setting up appointments for their offer to purchase meeting. Participants will be given approximately ten days to review the offer, after which time they may accept it or reject it. Participants may accept the offer that, that same day if they believe the offer is fair. Once a participant has accepted the offer to purchase, I must submit a request to the state, the Indiana Department of Homeland Security, asking for release of funds to purchase and close on said properties. Typically, this takes ninety to a hundred twenty days from the request date until the city receives the FEMA funds. But I've seen rare occasions where it took as much as a hundred eighty days. Therefore, the earliest we could be able to close on a property after, after the offer to purchase has been accepted would be approximately a hundred twenty to a hundred fifty days. Purchased homes must be demolished within ninety days after the closing, therefore, I will coordinate with Jeremy Gilbert prior to scheduling any closings to ensure that he and his staff can meet this requirement. Participants are reminded to please keep viability insurance on their home and property until after closing. If you have any questions, please contact me, and he has his phone number, at sign Rodney Rankenberger, Executive Director of the Mommy River Basin Commission. I asked, I asked Rod today if he would prepare a little statement, and without any hesitation, he said he would. He was, he said he wanted to be very careful in how he worded everything, because, you know, just like the last time Bob, and Phyllis seems to think I said, and so did Barb, that I said check. So, if I did, I did, but I meant, state and local agreement, there's a big difference. Three to, three to one, I lose. So, I have copies for, I have at least two more copies here, if you all three need one, so we can get you one here. And that's all I basically have on the mayor's report tonight. Council, our, department heads less.
Well, just, uh, keep the Jay Whitty family. The, he's old, camp are, uh, one of our whole time, his father-in-law is Jay, passed away unexpectedly yesterday. So, just keep them in your thoughts and prayers, they, they deal with this young, young man, really.
Good man, too.
Hit the death of it, and it just, uh, passed away, and it was a pretty big shock yesterday, and he was on duty and sort of made arrangements for him to get with his family, and, but just, just keep them in your thoughts and prayers over the next few days. He's, uh, they made those.
Jay's wife, Jo, and his daughters, Holly and Katie, yeah, good family. Kevin? Kurt? Lenny? Jeremy?
Uh, just, thanks for all the consideration, a bunch of time. And there are a lot of numbers, there's a lot of things, anybody wanting to join. Thank you, thank you, so, um, thank you for trying to get through, have a nice, good day.
Somebody wake Don up, Don, you got anything?
Thanks for the vet drug, it'll be used often.
How about Jeremy and Don giving a real brief update on handling that one? I mean, you, you did at the Board of Works, don't get into too much detail, but just.
Basically, what we're after today is waiting, waiting on some drying time. Plumbing, excavating, did complete the earth moving work. Not all the tiling is in yet, there's still three diamonds on the east end that need to be, have the tiling or under age, but, you know, so it will drain. They were hoping that they will come back on Thursday and start putting stone in the parking lots, but it's just gonna be too wet, so it'll be next week sometime before the stone starts falling down on the lots and then the actual walking paths. I know we're just starting, coming from there.
Yep, you've already, on the west end, you've already started the irrigation systems?
Yep, two of the, two of the diamonds have an actual irrigation again, the third diamond is waiting. I think it's contacted, you know, some temporary power, there's just a lot of moving parts.
Yep. Yep, they're doing a great job, though. Thanks, Jeremy and Don, for standing on top of that out there. Carrie, you have anything? Mr. Carba? Melissa? Council members? Phyllis? We have an event for him, and what is it?
It's for two brothers, bar and restaurant, they're going under, they're gonna have a grain opening, they're in the new ownership. And they are requesting to close Third Street from Monroe to the alley from five till eleven PM on September seventh. And all the.
September seventh?
Seven.
That's a Saturday. Saturday.
And they, police department, fire department, and street department have signed off on that. And they have provided their, sort of, their insurance.
Actually, approved, two brothers.
Yep, yes, I'll make a motion to approve that as well.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Hey, let me bring up one thing, if you don't mind.
This weekend is German Fest, we're gonna do a polka band on Thursday and also on Friday. I was gonna ask permission, I didn't, I, I sent in a, a, a form for it earlier, but I wanted to ask one favor, if I could possibly set up a tent on the corner, northeast corner of the courthouse, a twenty by thirty, where we did last week for Kikianga, for seating and tables for people to eat under.
Absolutely.
Thursday evening and then to Friday. Yes, I'm sorry, right on the north side of the courthouse, just on the northeast quarter of, or on the southeast corner of Madison, Second Street, closest to Second Street. I'd, I'd like permission to do that, and then also, if we could get a couple of barricades just to put around that tent, somebody, somebody wouldn't hit it.
Salute.
Thank, thank.
All in favor?
Aye.
I must recuse myself.
Yep. Anything else? Phyllis and Jim, anything else?
Thanks to Sharon for writing the, we have a, we have a guest in our community as an ambassador from Bavaria. His name is Berenhard Kirchner, and we ask Sharon if she would write a proclamation for him for being a, a, a person of education for our youth from Belmont High School German Club, that's traveled there, he's been a guy, a, a guide or a tourist guide.
A host.
As a host, and, and is educated and is a great historian, he's flown in, he flew in last night, and we asked her to write a proclamation and also Kim, at opening ceremonies on Friday at about six PM to present him with the proclamation, the key to the city. And then our festival will start at, the keg tapping will be at six o'clock. So, he'll be doing, he'll speak in tongues with the history of our, uh, our German culture and in our history of our German culture in Adams County. Eric Zill will be doing it in the English, and then he'll speak it in the, the.
It's Bavarian language.
Bavarian language. German. He, he, he pronounced it high German is what he speaks, but different dialects with each of the Bavarian communities.
Means they have low German.
When I say the tongues, that's tongue in cheek.
A different tongue than ours.
So, anyway, thank you, that's what I have to say.
I do, I have an ordinance that, if you recall, the BZA had, uh, recommended that you change a yield sign out in Grey Goose addition to a stop sign, so I have an ordinance that does that. So, if you wanna.
What number is it?
Two thousand nineteen dash eight.
Dash eight?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to place ordinance twenty nineteen dash eight on its first reading by short title only. Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't work.
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight, short title, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapter seventy-seven of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand fifteen as supplemented.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash eight on its first reading.
Second. Motion and a second for passage of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight on its first reading, whatever roll call vote.
Jim Cire?
Yes.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Chadwick Funtier?
Yes.
Charlie Surt?
Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance twenty nineteen dash eight on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight, short title, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends chapter seventy-seven of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand fifteen as supplemented.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash eight on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight on a second reading by short title, or, excuse me, whatever roll call vote.
Jim Cire?
Yes.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Charlie Funtier?
Yes.
Charlie Surt?
Yes. They wanna suspend the rules on this going, so I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance twenty nineteen dash eight on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight on its third reading by short title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Tim? Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-8, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as a 2015 as supplemented.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-8 on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-8, all, whatever roll call vote.
Jim Coyer?
Yes.
Craig Koshal?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fordham?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes. Thank you, ordinance 2019-8 has been adopted. What else, Tim?
Tired.
Seeing nothing else, I'll look for a motion to approve the claims. So moved.